On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to this evening's Board of Education meeting. The Ohio Legislature passed House Bill 197 in response to the COVID-19 public health crisis. That bill grants permissive authority to defined state and local public bodies to hold public meetings by way of teleconference or video conference until December 1st, 2020, or the period of a COVID-19 emergency cease this, whichever occurs first. In order to hold such meetings, the public body must meet the qualifications established in the bill related to providing adequate public notice, public participation, and distribution of information and materials. The board believes it has satisfied all of HP 197's criteria to hold this evening's meeting by teleconference or video conference. A copy of the board's meeting agenda is available for me to review on our district website. Mr. Mucha, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Edder?
Here.
Mrs. Schuker?
Here.
Mr. Souchaki?
Here.
Mr. Naaman?
Here.
Mr. Dobbins?
Here. Five present, none absent. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And I'm following the American Legions Guidance, which is that we should face toward a flag that's visible in the room, and if not, to a direction where a flag could be found. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Ms. Schuker, I believe, made the motion?
Oh, second.
And Mr. Naaman, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Mucha, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Schuker?
Aye.
Mr. Naaman?
Aye.
Mrs. Edder?
Aye.
Mr. Souchaki?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Comments from the public. The board values and encourages public comment on education issues and is now asking the public to email comments that it might otherwise provided during this evening's meeting to the following email address, INFo, that's info@cuyhtf.org. The board will strive to respond to all comments received as promptly as possible. I'm going to shift the conversation to Mr. Evans. We have presentations this evening.
All righty. And actually, we have four, not just Mrs. Houghton and Mr. Coleman. Mr. Birick and Mr. Kelber as well, since Mrs. Houghton was the first one signed on. We'll lead off with Mrs. Houghton.
Okay. I just wanted to update you on what is happening with the elementary school in terms of this distance learning that we're hearing. I've been meeting with teams of teachers over the last couple of weeks. I've met with every team twice, same format that you're using here in order to talk about how we're going to provide instruction, how we're going to assess students, following up on students with whom we are concerned, and also planning that we're doing. So we've had a lot of meetings. I've had a lot of communication with students and parents via newsletters, both electronic and I mailed home communication, how to get in touch with everyone via snail mail. I sent home that connection update as well as personal letters to all of the students to let them know how much I'm missing them. We've had, all of the staff has reached out to parents through newsletters, balloons, email, phone call, you know, we've been trying to reach out in any method we can. And we decided as a pre-K through 5 building, our priorities really are obviously the health, wellness, and safety of our students and parents, and then to provide them with continued education via digital format, the electronic format. So every classroom has a Google Class set up, a Google Classroom per grade level. Some grade levels, like 4th grade, already had their Google Classroom set up, so they have one for each individual teacher. But most of them are by grade level, and that's where the majority of the announcements are coming through. We understand that we need to be flexible with our expectations based on family situations and circumstances, as our elementary students are pretty dependent upon adults in order to get them on a device, give them the time and space for a device, help them with some of their schoolwork. So it's a little bit different scenario than what you'll hear about from the 6 through 12 building, just because we know that so much of it is dependent upon what the availability of the parents is. And I've heard from parents who are very much overwhelmed just by everything happening, you know, between losing jobs and the flooding that took place in Valley View and finding, some of them have multiple children that they're trying to get on devices. So we're trying to do everything we can to make it a little easier for them. What we did, as soon as we found out that we were going to be out for a longer period of time, we set up some guidelines. I let the teachers know that there were some expectations, one of them being organization. So helping parents and students organize their week by giving them sort of an outline of what was expected of them, and then flexibility of when they could complete that work or when they could turn it in, because some students will do a little bit every day, some students will only have access to a computer and/or an adult one day a week. So we know that we need to be flexible and really, I shared with the teachers that they do this anyway on a regular basis. If a student is going through a crisis at home, we're flexible in when they require work to be done or how they make adjustments to it. So we will continue to do that, knowing that flexibility can be huge for this group of students. We prioritized for the family, making iReady, which is a program that our students are already using. iReady reading and math lessons are the number one priority, and we did that because they're prescriptive, so they are designed to meet with students at their level and then take them further along on that, on their own individual course. So students have already taken to diagnostics this year, and the level that they are on is already set, so they have sort of a prescription for lessons. The other reason we chose to make that our number one priority is because they do not need parent assistance to complete iReady. They may need some help getting on, logging on, the little ones, but this is something they can do on their own, so we thought that would take some of the pressure off of the parents as well by giving them something they're familiar with. Then every teacher has additional reading and math lessons and activities on Google Classroom for them to complete. And then we made science, social studies, art, music, PE, guidance, library, technology, all of them, they all have Google Classroom, and those are meant for enrichment and extra activities. I explained to parents and teachers that kids would normally be in those classes one day a week, so if they could complete one activity from those classes each week, that'd be great, but if they run out of time, we want them to focus on the math and reading first. We also discussed assessment, and as a pre-K through 5 building, decided that we do want to hold our students accountable, we want to assess them, but there's a big difference between assessment and assigning grades. And for our level, we thought that it would be best to assess students by giving them feedback on what they're turning in, assigning them an additional lesson or giving them additional assistance via Google Meet or other activities that we have, extra lessons if they're struggling with something, but not necessarily assigning points or letter grades to assignments. It's more about their effort, their completion, and our ability to monitor what they are mastering in their concepts. So at the end of the fourth quarter, we will be printing or sending home an iReady report for reading and an iReady report for math, as well as a narrative, depending on whether or not we come back, that will determine if there will be, how much there will be. But a narrative from each teacher will describe to the parent and to the next teacher exactly what the schools have accomplished over this fourth quarter and where they are leaving off. Are they right on track for moving on to the next grade? What are some things they need to work on over the summer? Just providing some of that feedback for parents and students, and then for the next teacher. Our teachers are all available in a variety of formats for their parents, and I've also given parents my phone number and email to contact me. So I've been hearing a lot of really positive feedback this week from parents, feeling a little better about how things are organized and how their students are going to be assessed. Got a lot of pictures that are being posted on Twitter of kids doing things at home. So, so far, so good. Obviously, we'd much rather be at school with those students in front of us, but I think our teachers and staff are working really hard to make the best out of this situation and to provide our kids with as much opportunity as they can to continue their learning during this time. And for those students that we haven't heard from, we do have a handful of students that we have not made contact with, so I am reaching out to all of those families to try to find out if there is something we can do to help. Do they need a computer? Do they need access to something? How can we help them at least try to maintain the level they were at where they left off? So we're getting personal phone calls from me. Any questions for me?
We'll go through everybody, then we'll pick up with some questions at the end, because I think we'll cover some. So, George, you were second on. George, just tell the board how we're addressing the special needs students and how we're meeting the needs on the IEPs.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. We've spent a lot of time coordinating with our related service providers and our inter-bachelor specialists who are case managers for our students, make sure that they're making good faith efforts, provide accommodations and services in our students' IEPs. You know, one of the things that's been nice, as I've said with a lot of the meetings that Joy's had with her staff, pre-K through 5, as well as the middle school and high school with Mr. Coleman, and I've gotten a lot of this coordinating with our general ed teachers, see what we do to assist with specific students and kind of allocate our resources. Been super impressed with the way everybody's worked together. Our staff's done a real, real nice job communicating with one another to make sure that we're able to meet everybody's needs and to provide the supports that are essential for our kids to be successful. Same thing, like Ms. Houghton said, you know, reach out to a lot of individual families, make sure that we see there's things we do to help. You know, one of the biggest things that we've talked with as we've met with our inter-bachelor specialists as well has been trying to continue to build, maintain great relations with our families, see what we do to assist them, and use opportunities to assess our students in some different ways than we're accustomed to, but so far, so good on our front.
Thanks, George. Pat, middle school, high school?
There we go. I'll piggyback a little bit on what Joy shared. A lot of meetings over the first two weeks, we spent a lot of time kind of making sure our teachers are getting off to a good start. We're up and running virtually. All our teachers have created an online presence. About 98% of them are using Google Classroom. We do have two staff members at the high school that are using School G, and that's just because that's a tool they were already using successfully with their kids and kind of already adding a virtual dynamic to their traditional lessons, so we didn't say any need to disrupt that. We, in our meetings, we talked with our teachers, like Joy said, a lot about kind of establishing a framework, the importance of flexibility for our families and how we're going to assess. In terms of the framework, our teachers are going to be pushing out weekly announcements at the front of their week and providing a bank of assignments, but then providing some fluidity and some flexibility in terms of kids meeting timelines during the course of that week and getting that work completed, getting it turned into them. Our teachers are twice a week hosting virtual office hours, so when kids inevitably need some extra support and help, they have a couple opportunities to dive in with them and meet virtually. That's in addition, obviously, our teachers being available over email. And then we talked about having a weekly check for understanding, a weekly assessment. And I think important to note, what we're doing is we're staggering that. So, you know, what we don't want that to fall to is everyone assessing their kids on a Friday, and a particular student having five or six assessments on a Friday and not enough time slots or Chromebooks in the household to do it. So we're broken down by department. You know, the math department starts on a Monday, ends on a Friday. Social Studies Department starts on a different day, and so each day, kids. But then again, the goal is to provide some flexibility there for families. I would say on that note, we are, we are teaching new content, we are grading, we are assessing, we're issuing fourth quarter grades. Had a number of conference calls with principals in Cogge County and the CDC, and it seemed like the momentum was really around a pass-fail approach. We had some concerns, we felt like that invited some difficulty with respect to lots of things, transcripts, GPA, athletic eligibility, you know, potentially need to add days in the summer, we still don't really know on some of this stuff. So we wanted to stay business as usual as long as it was practical and as long as it was safe. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, one of the drivers for us continuing on the grading front is just trusting our people and trusting our staff. Our people do a really good job of working with our kids, and even in these situations, help our kids feel like all this work's acceptable and doable for them. So the teachers have really been the heroes in all this. They've been incredibly hardworking and incredibly cooperative, really come together, very flexible, very compassionate with our kids and our families, so really good stuff there. Now that we're kind of off and running, we're a couple weeks into this, the top of my priority list at the high school level is really around focusing on the seniors first and foremost. You know, we're sorting through game plans around targeting a group of at-risk seniors. You know, Tom says it very well at commencement every year, most of our kids walk across the stage, some of them go sprinting across the stage, and some of them get dragged across the stage. And I'll be candid with you, this situation hurts us quite a bit from that standpoint. We've got it down pretty well in terms of dragging some of our kids across the stage, because our people work magic when we have our kids in the building with them fourth quarter, we get a lot done. We've kind of got that playbook. I think without having access to our kids, it's going to be more challenging for us than normal. So, you know, that being said, we're leaving no stone unturned, and that's priority number one, doing everything in our power to get our seniors across the stage. I'd say staying on the theme of our seniors, I'm bullish on one way or another, this is all going to settle down at one point, and when it does, we're still going to have a senior week. You know, we're looking at some dates in late June right now, nothing we can commit to or communicate formally yet, but, you know, the goal is to still have a senior awards night, the goal is to still have a senior prom. We will have a commencement ceremony. It might get bumped back further than we like, we won't know for certain to be able to communicate specifics until we get clear directives from the governor's office, obviously, and on the ending of the school closure, and some mass gathering recommendations. So obviously, we'll want that information before we get onto some specifics. I'd say on a lighter note, you know, we're really working hard to keep our kids engaged with the school community and keeping them engaged with one another. You know, part of me would love to share my screen, I got some great stuff up. You know, we're still doing a virtual student of the month, we're doing, we've moved to a virtual student of the week. We used to do PBI students of the week, now we're doing a virtual student of the week. We celebrated one of those earlier today. Aiden Marvel, 6th grader, congratulations there. Chad Robinson and Joel Kovik have partnered up to establish the Redskin Running Club on Strava, dropped over 100 members now. Joe Naaman's actually been an active participant on that, and I'm actually looking at my leaderboard right now, and Tom Evans is eking his way towards the top of that leaderboard there. So we have a former rugby player beating out some cross-country athletes in total mileage right now. So further evidence the whole world's off its rocker right now. Ryan Kelber's took the lead and been doing a great job. He'll probably talk a little bit about it as well. He's been making sure our seniors each get kind of a spotlight day, so he's been doing a senior spotlight, he's been promoting that on the website and on Twitter. We had a virtual spirit week. Shelley Studier and Kendra DeVito took the lead on that, had a lot of participation. I'm looking at a picture right now of our art teacher, John Schaefer, wearing a blue wig, it's, I'm sure it's floating around on Twitter somewhere. Really good stuff. John's a painfully shy and introverted person, so we think the spirit week really helped him come out of his shell. The height strong thing's been a fun thing, and middle school's really been pushing that. We had a great video last week with all the staff members kind of virtually holding hands and telling the students that they missed them, and this week, they're challenging the students to show how they're showing kindness during our quarantine. And so right now, they have a 57 slide, height strong slide deck where each kid has contributed in some way, you know, with a picture and a saying, you know, things that they're doing to promote kindness with everything going on. Some really good stuff there. There's a great Riley Pollak video, going back to the virtual spirit week. Riley Pollak wrote and performed a one and a half minute song about how much she misses and appreciates her teachers on the ukulele. If it'd be appropriate, maybe I could drop the link in the chat window. It's something everyone should, you know, take a look at. I'd end it with this, we got great people here, regardless of the conditions, you know, great people find a way. I think 10 times like this is when you really learn who you are, and our people have just blown me away over the last three weeks. We've obviously had some difficulties here, but there's also been a lot of reminders about how lucky we are at the school community, and we are really, really fortunate. So a lot of good stuff going on.
All righty. And last and certainly not least, Mr. Kelber, and one might think that with no school that he'd be idle right now, but he's really doing some kind of neat things to keep our kids engaged athletically. So Ryan, it's all you.
Sure, I think I'm leading the Strava mileage with a stroller right now, so gaining ground on some people there, but thanks for having me. I hope everyone's safe and doing well here. I know it's a tough time here, but it's good to see everybody's face. And Mr. Souchaki, you look like you're in some tropical paradise there. Getting me a little bit.
Just my backyard.
Yeah, okay. As Mr. Coleman mentioned, we're doing the senior spotlight, so every day, we try to highlight a senior, and it was a form that they filled out. I'm still reaching out to some other seniors who haven't done it yet, but just a little, like almost virtually yearbook of some highlights that they've been doing, so you can catch that on the website, on Twitter, and on Facebook. This weekend, we have a, I'm in the middle of a presentation for the winter sports awards, which we never got to do, so we're going to honor all those winter sports teams. We have a big PowerPoint where we have coaches are getting interactive. We have a ton of pictures, we have some videos and all that, so I'm hoping to have that done by this weekend, waiting on a couple coaches kind of teaching them a little bit how to get creative there, but so far, we're up to about 40 slides on that, so that should be a nice, nice presentation, nice way to honor that, the winter sports teams and all that, that they, since they didn't have their banquet. Currently, our spring coaches, you know, we can't hold these coaches back right now. As Mr. Coleman mentioned too, Mr. Schaefer, man, this guy's, he's been busy there. He has a Google Classroom for the track team, and he's been posting workout videos, nothing too strenuous, but the kids have been awesome coming back and putting their own videos on there, and, you know, Mr. Evans has been putting his elliptical workouts on there, and Mr. Schaefer put a great video yesterday, would have been the 21st Annual George Gross Invitational. If you haven't seen that video, it's been out on Twitter, and it's on, I think it's on the website, you got to look at that, it has some old video footage and all that, so you could tell our coaches are missing it maybe just as much as our kids are, everything going on, so. But Mr. Schaefer's room has been so good. Mr. or Coach Manfredoni is doing the same thing with girls softball. They've been virtually playing catch with each other on there, and there's different type of workouts for their arms and all that. Coach Solomon, he's been, besides beating everybody in the video game throughout the conference and everything, he's been posting on Instagram all kind of different workouts too, and he has a good following, inspirational quotes, he's been taking classes on leadership, and he's been sharing that, and we're even going to get the middle school track involved in a similar platform at the high school in regards to the Google Classroom. So all our coaches are pretty active. Like I said, I think they miss their kids just as much as the kids miss being around them, and we're moving in the right direction here with that. I did get a notification today from the OHSAA. If by some chance we do get back on May 4th, I know it's a long shot, there is a schedule out there where there are, there will be playoffs, there will be games, and state tournaments and everything that will go through the month of June. So, you know, if that does happen, we will be prepared and ready to roll with that. You know, we'll see what happens. They did mention though, if school is canceled, that that will cancel spring sports, so I think, you know, we have pretty much just two clear-cut options that could happen here, but we're all holding out hope, and we'll take it day by day here. But like I said, I hope everyone's doing well, and it's good to see them, everybody.
Thanks, Ryan. Two things that I just want to emphasize, and first of all, we got off to a great start. I think the fact that we were in school that Friday, and our teachers had the opportunity to start to introduce Google Meets to the kids and some of the, or the Google Classroom, we really got a jumpstart on people. My next greatest concern is social emotional, because now that those kids have been home for a period of time, and we're going to start to have some stressors kick in, and I just, and we'll probably be meeting with our guidance staff just to make sure that we're going to address some of those needs with those students as they arise. As I talk to other districts, other districts are having a large amount of that right now, and, you know, we're going to prepare to, and I told them, be prepared to shift gears, we've been doing a certain number of things in the classroom for the same, through four weeks here. Be ready to switch it up, do a virtual field trip, get some, do some cross-curricular stuff, but be ready to change pace on it a little bit. So the second thing I want to address is the grading. You can talk to 32 different school districts in Cogge County, and you're going to get 32 different spins on what people are doing grade-wise. I think this is just a chance for us to do what serves us best. I was online today with a group of superintendents. Parma had 700 kids out of 7,000 pick up Chromebooks. They obviously can't get into a grading situation. We've had a real high level of engagement, I don't want to discourage that engagement, so we're going to continue to assess and really look to apply grades in the middle school, high school at the end. Joy's done a great job of working on the skill attainment and goal attainment in the elementary, and their report cards will reflect that, so we're in a good place for that right now. So again, hats off to everybody. As I said, I did the Google Meet with, I think I had 89 staff members on it. We almost have missed the college class on how to deal with students during a pandemic, but I will tell you that this staff has certainly risen to the occasion, and are meeting the kids' needs and are reaching out and looking out for kids academically, emotionally, and physically, so I couldn't ask for more from the staff. Board, if you have any individual questions you want to throw out there to any of the principals, I didn't let Ted speak, but Ted's hanging in there too, but go ahead and fire away right now.
I had a question. Ryan, this is for you. Has there been any, and you're probably going to say no, but I just thought I'd throw it out there, any word about fall sports and if we're delayed, like if we don't go back? I know it's kind of up in the air, and you probably don't have an exact answer, but are they talking about fall sports at all?
Yeah, you know what, the OHSAA said that they're working on a plan where if it was delayed, they're not sharing that plan with us, but they are working on it, and they recognize that it very much could happen. Our conference did talk about too, is how we could adjust if that should happen, like, you know, we're not just going to go out and say, just schedule your own games, we still want to keep it within the conference, that way everybody's protected, we'll have games, but the OHSAA says that they're working on a plan just in case, they're just not sharing that yet. I think they don't want to scare too many people here, especially before the summer, so, but it is something that they're thinking about, and it's, unfortunately, it's realistic, so.
Okay, thank you.
My grasp at OHSAA has done a really good job of handling this, and I think the best thing that he's done is they've had plans in place, but they've waited for the governor to take the lead on these issues, and that kind of determining which direction they're going to go, but my hats off, I talked to Jerry a couple weeks ago, and they really, they've done what they had to do, they had to make some tough decisions, but they're doing what they need to do down at the OHSAA.
And I think regardless, when we do come back, there's going to be some adjustments and some, some new policies that we're probably going to have to put in place, that, you know, the state's going to ask us to put in place, so we're going to have to work on the fly when it comes to that, you know, with any kind of contact, and, you know, even just exchanging money and everything there, so, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we get there, and hopefully, hopefully, we're not worrying about that.
Okay. Can I ask another question? I'm going to be a hug for a second. So one of my kids' teachers was giving them the option to hand in like physical assignments at school, and I kind of was going, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, no, you're not doing it, there's another option to take pictures of it and send it in, but just wondering if you're, if you're having a lot of volume with people handing in documents?
No, we're really trying to get away from that, and we, I said last week, and then I reiterated in a memo to the teachers last Friday, that if they're not all in electronic format now, they need to be. We, the governor doesn't want people out and about, we don't want kids dropping packets of work off, we have to find out a way to get that done electronically right now, so there was a couple stragglers that still had some hard copy stuff out there, and the principals have done a good job kind of saying, listen, we need to get away from that.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question for Mr. Coleman?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so can you just briefly tell what kind of, uh, impact this situation's had on, on our seniors that are looking forward to, uh, to college admissions and how that process has been impacted? Have you heard any stories about how it's going or not going?
You know, right now our focus has been on the scholarship front, the scholarship end of it. So, you know, I spent a day i- in the building last week, kind of getting, uh, calling, contacting each scholarship committee and, and taking their temperature on bumping things back a little bit. Uh, most were comfortable with it. Some, some can't. We, we respected that, but, uh, wanted to get that established and, and communicate it out to folks. Um, outside of that, it's tough. We, we don't have our babies in our building. So it's really, it's really difficult to answer that question in terms of like a feel for where, where our, our people are at, where our seniors are at emotionally. I'm sure they're, I'm sure they're disappointed. Um, I, I can totally understand that. Like I said, that's why I wanted to make it a point to share that, you know, the idea of some of those, um, uh, uh, you know, some of those important pieces that all seniors like to go through, senior awards night, here's the big thing. Um, you know, prom, obviously, um, we, we got on the, we got on the horn pretty early with the, um, uh, with the, uh, art museum uh, about backing up a date. So we have some, some, uh, like I said, it's a block, uh, set aside in late June to hopefully celebrate with our seniors there commencement as well. If we have to bump it back, we will. Um, in, in, in terms of the admission process, that's, um, yeah, I, I know that that's been impacted. Um, you know, obviously colleges are in the same, same boat. We are, you know, Lindy as a guidance counselor might be able to speak to that as well. Like so much of that kind of happens, you know, virtually over email or that sort of thing. So I, I, I think we're in a good spot there.
Yeah. A lot, Mark, a lot of the acceptance, like letters have already gone out. They go out a, earlier, like before this. So a lot of kids kind of knew where they were going, or at least they knew financially what was available and stuff like that. So the college visits have been had. It's, 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 that I don't think has been as impacted as other things.
Yeah. Those kids are going, those kids are going out of town. Really, uh, they get out in front of that. And most of those kids know, I think the kids that might lag a little bit are the kids that end up at Tri-C or they know that they're going to go down to Cleveland State and that's a pretty easy commute for them. Uh, sometimes those are, those come in a little bit later, but I, I, I think, um, I think most of it, I haven't heard much since they, we've been out a session, but there was a, a lot of kids that had already made their choice, has been accepted, had gotten those emails from their colleges and, and, uh, we're, we're ready to go on a lot of front on that end of it. We don't, and, and Pat, just to follow up on Pat's, we, my biggest concern is I didn't want kids to miss out on scholarship opportunities. So we have more time with the guidance staff to, to do that, to try and make sure that, because every year, uh, and it, it isn't, doesn't change from class to class. Uh, it takes a little quick in the pants sometimes to get, get the kids to fill some scholarship applications out. There's a lot available for our kids and we want to see them take advantage of that.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Are the, um, are the like same class schedules being adhered to?
No, we don't, no, Marie, we, it, it's not possible to follow a class schedule.
Right.
From the simple standpoint of not enough computers in the house. Sometimes you don't have parents there. So a- as Pat and Joy both alluded to their, their, their teachers are sending some workout and they're saying it's going to take you approximately this amount of time to do this. Fit it in where you can fit it in. Cause some, some families have very structured schedules. I, I've talked to a couple of parents that they got their kids out of bed still at, at eight o'clock in the morning and they're going hard from eight to noon and then they're done. Other parents are, are picking up some parents when they get home from work are working with kids. But no, no, the teachers have recorded a lot of lessons and send those out to the students. So the students can look at them, uh, as many times they need to. The stu- all the teachers have office hours, kind of pseudo office hours set up and have been very accessible via email, um, and, and gotten back to the students, uh, in, in a real, the parents that have come in to pick up Chromebooks have just raving about how quickly student teachers are responding to their students' questions.
I, I could just hear as a, as a parent, I have a kid at each building level and they have been phenomenal. Like, you know, they have, my kids have a lot of work. They're engaged. I think it's an appropriate amount. They're able to do it. If they're not, the teachers are flexible with like due dates, or if they're not understanding like how to turn in an assignment, or there's confusion about where to find it and so forth. Um, I know the teachers have gotten back to me, the ones that I've emailed super quick. Um, so I just, as a parent, I, I think you guys are doing amazing. You know, the staff is really doing great at all levels.
Yes. Yep. So much, I've told, I've told teachers to set a time for themselves to disengage. I don't, I don't want them up to midnight answering emails. I, I, in a memo to them last week, I said, listen, uh, a lot of them are working 14, 16 hour days right now. I said, you have to disengage at some point in time. Make, make up your mind at, at whatever five or six o'clock. You're going to turn your computer off. You're not going to look at your email. You'll catch it back up in the morning that, that, uh, they've got a kind of look, they were, they've had their foot to the floor and been really going hard at it. And I said, everybody take a deep breath right now and, and, and we'll be fine.
Yeah. The, the thing I'd add is, um, we, we would have struggled midal if we tried to stick to that, that traditional schedule. We, we actually talked about completely disrupting that in some of our meetings, you know, all of us, myself included. Teachers, our, our, our teachers are, are programmed to think in terms of lessons and learning in 45 minute segments and that, that just isn't going to work. So again, one of our, one of our big topics of conversation in our first week was around, um, working with things across, you know, a week now and, and getting, getting instructional materials and resources and assignments out to kids, uh, on the front end a week in advance and providing them, you know, a week's worth of time, um, to flexibly, you know, around their household schedule, um, and managing the circumstances at home, work through things on, on that scale, on that level. And then, and then we staggered each week. So again, math department starts their week on one day, social studies department starts another day so that things are broken up for the kids and everything isn't kind of hitting them all at one day of the week.
State would come back at some point and say, you didn't put enough hours to say that.
Hours in before the, before the crisis occurred, Mrs. Etter. We, we had enough hours to graduate all of our, to graduate our seniors before the crisis occurred. So everything that, in the state has very, and multiple occasions have said that they're not, they're not looking for us to say it's a three hour day, it's a four hour day, it's a six hour day. They just want to see what our plan looks like. Uh, Ted's got that plan. We'll, we'll be posting that on the website next week. Uh, we're, we're not in any danger. Again, we, and the state has also given us the flexibility to say with we not advertising with the kids, we can, we can take where we were when we, when the crisis kicked in and call that the end if we so choose to. Uh, obviously that's something, that's an option. Some of the bigger districts are looking at, but not that an option that we're considering right now.
Okay. Good.
You know, I'll, I'll actually, um, I'll actually echo, um, Mr. Schukert's comments too. I mean, you all are doing phenomenal. I mean, I actually, actually I could speak from my kids' perspective too. They all have plenty of work. They're, they're really engaged with everything. The teachers are getting back to everyone really quickly on questions that they have. I mean, you can't ask for anything more in these trying times that we have right now in our nation. So, so again, hats off to everybody. I mean, from the top down, you guys are really phenomenal.
Ultimately, I think this is going to be, uh, you know, after we get through all this, this is, this is going to be a positive impact on our instructional practices. Um, it's just going to make us think about doing things differently and, and, and giving kids different options. So I think once we get through all of this, it's going to, we're going to be in a lot better place as a district. We're already in a great place, but you know, I, I, I just ultimately think that, uh, you know, teachers are stepping up and everybody's stepping up. So it'll, it'll, it'll ultimately be, I think, a great thing for us.
There was not one oh woe was me from our teaching staff. I, I, a, a large percent of our teaching staff looked at this as an opportunity to, to really explore and guys, and, and we encourage them to do some different things, to, to, to go to some different formats, to try some different things. Uh, and, and they've responded phenomenally to that. And I'm going to cut it off there because we got a, Mooch is probably rolling his eyes at me because I, I, I took a little bit too much time here, but I wanted the board to, just to get a little bit of an update on, on where we were from, uh, from all those, uh, administrators and, 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 uh, where we're at. We're in a good place right now. I just wanted, wanted the board to be aware of that and hear it from the people on the front line. So.
Thanks, everyone.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.
Mooch, all you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Um, a couple of recommendations tonight and then a couple of comments. Um, first recommendation, motion to approve the minutes of the March 11th, 2020 regular meeting and the March 31st, 2020 special meeting as found in attachment C1. Next recommendation, uh, 6A is going to be motion to approve purchase orders over 5,000 as found in attachment T2. Last recommendation is going to be 6B, which is a motion to permit the treasurer to add in the provisions of the coronavirus aid relief and economic security act, the CARES Act to the district's 403B plans, the Cuyahoga Heights Schools 403B Plan and the Cuyahoga Heights School Special Pay Plan. As for motions, 5A, 6A, and 6B.
So moved. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Yeah. Ms. Schukert made motion and Ms. Etter seconded. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yeah, just wanted to touch base on the, uh, purchase order. So that's 6A. If I open the, uh, attachment T2, we just have one tonight. It's to the Ohio Schools Council and it's for our gas utility, natural gas. It's $18,176. We do two purchase orders at the beginning of the year. Each is 35,000 for the gas utility. The reason we do two is gas is provided in two ways, uh, through transportation and through the actual gas commodity itself. So we split 35,000 between, or we take 35,000 between the two. So 70,000 in total. Um, while the commodity, it, excuse me, while the transportation is going down, the commodity is going up. And that's why we see the increase tonight for a purchase order, um, of 18,176. We have it, you know, within our budget. We adjusted a little bit of the allocation, but we have enough to cover it. So, um, but that's just what it came out to be for us for our gas utility going. And the other item that we have, um, which are going to be 6B, is we just at the, uh, special board meeting, 331, we had approved the, uh, revisions to our 403B plan. And during that time, um, the CARES Act was signed officially into law. I believe that Friday, the 27th, yeah, Friday, the 27th, when we sent that, uh, notice out, but we already had the language in the revisions. So what this, um, motion is, it just permits the treasurer to add in the three, um, planned provisions that we have in the public content portion of board docs. Um, none of these seem detrimental to the district. They all relate to the coronavirus COVID-19. Um, I, you know, recommend this for approval to the board, um, along with the other motions that I have tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mucio. Um, there's no other discussion. Now, would you call the roll then?
Mr. Schukert.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Sutaki.
Aye.
Mr. Namon.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Treasures discussion.
Oh yeah. Just a couple of items tonight. Uh, first item, um, to revisit the timeline to present the May 2025 year forecast. We touched base on this at the, uh, March 11th board meeting, I believe. Um, but due to the lots changing in the month. So, um, we have to kind of modify our timeline for the, um, reviewing approval of the May five year forecast. Now, what I have in the public comment, um, and this is just kind of my quick thoughts would be, uh, for the Board of Education to review the draft, May 2025 year forecast during the April 22nd Board of Education meeting. So that's in a couple of weeks from now. Um, from there, items two and three deal with the finance committee and best committee. So that's going to be where you guys are going to have to jump in and give, you know, your thoughts on those two items. And then wrapping up with number four, which is the Board of Education to formally approve the May 2025 year forecast at the May 13th Board of Education meeting. So, uh, thoughts on two and three best committee, finance committee.
Mr. Mucio, I mean, when would you, we can do a finance, um, meeting like this. What, is there a, um, do we, we don't, do we want to do it before the board meeting or after? What works?
My thoughts, yeah, my thoughts would be after the April 22nd meeting, but before the May 13th.
Okay. I will put that together in a doodle.
Okay. And then, uh, best committee, is that something you want?
We're, we're going to pass on a bad, there's, I, I don't think it's feasible to, 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 that group is parents and they've got, I, I just don't think that that's feasible to even get them together via video conference at this point in time. So I would probably, uh, pass on that part of it.
Okay. Sounds like everybody's comfortable with. Gotcha. Sounds like everybody's comfortable with one and four. Then Lindy's going to send the doodle for number two. And then Tom said cancellation of number three. So I think everybody's on the same page with that. Okay. Um, the next item for discussion, the state software redesign for the financial software, uh, migration, uh, our update. So we had yesterday training all day. Uh, it was nine AM to three o'clock PM. Um, it was myself, Yelixa and Kathy. We did everything webex with Neonet and it was a navigation training. So what that means is we went through both the USAS, Uniform School Accounting System, and then the USPS, which is the Uniform School Payroll System, uh, both sides of it. And they just really walked us through every tab and every clickable button in both of the systems. Um, that's just the very first, you know, just getting us familiar with what it looks like. So we went through the core for the, uh, USAS, which dealt with, you know, bank accounts, account numbers and whatnot. So we went through everything. It took the full day. Uh, and again, that's just the first step and actually looking at our, um, you know, currently built, um, what we can call it, the, uh, our site, our accounting site, um, template that we have up. I would say it went well. Um, but again, we have more training coming up in the next few weeks. We're going to start, you know, slowly getting into actually doing items in the new system as opposed to the old. I will say that, uh, you know, watching the new system, um, makes me, you know, uh, very fond of the old system going, you know, obsolete. I think it's probably because I got used to it over, you know, 10 years from working through it. So, uh, I guess I'll miss it when it goes. So.
It's kind of like missing it.
That's weird. And it's funny. Everybody complains about it. Now that, you know, we're going to this new system, everybody's like, no, we don't want to, you know, jump ship right. I just want to also point out for, um, the board, uh, Tom here tonight, that at this point in time, the COVID-19 public health crisis has not impacted our implementation of the state software redesign. And that could change in the future, but as of today, um, you know, we're still on the same goal of having everything up before the start of next school year, hopefully. And the last item, I'm sorry.
That's good to know.
Gotcha. And the, uh, the last item tonight for discussion that I had was, uh, to discuss, you know, our facility and maintenance and upgrades. Um, I'm going to, you know, you, you know, Tom, he's going to jump in on this conversation too. Um, you know, we were, we went out and we've got an RFP for, you know, three great firms. They came in, presented GPD, uh, became the firm that we chose and we've been working with them for over a year, I want to say right now. They came and did an assessment. Um, then we developed a timeline to kind of go through it. And, you know, we're talking obviously a levy, but with everything going on, I think at this point in time, we want, you know, all five plus Tom and myself to be on the same page with our, you know, goal and direction. And, you know, we talked about this roughly, but this is going to be the formal discussion that we have. My recommendation would be to keep things going, but to push our goal of, you know, any type of levy from potentially November to spring of 2021. That way it lets everything unfold that's currently taking place with, you know, payoffs, furloughs, um, unemployment that we see taking place, the economy, which is a big question mark. Um, we don't know how, uh, you know, util, or, uh, you know, items of steel and, you know, whatnot for renovations are going to be shipped from China or Mexico or whatever location. So there's a lot of different pieces that come into that equation. But my thoughts, and I wanted to expand about this with everybody else here, would be maybe to kind of push that goal, you know, from November of 2020 this year to potentially spring of 2021. But at the same time, we're not going to stop working. We're going to continue working with GPD.
And just my, my spin on that is, uh, we don't have any less positive momentum as far as the district is concerned right now, but the, the honest to God truth is a lot of our families are not working. And, and that, that even with, in November is just too soon for people to be back to work and recovering financially, uh, to ask them for a levy increase, uh, regardless of how good they feel about the schools that you're going to at that point in time. So, uh, the thought is let, let's people get back on their feet. Let them get, let, let the economy rebound. Um, Matt and I taught, I'm not a, I'm not an economist. So, um, but my thought is that the longer we're out, the, the, the longer it's going to be to recover. And I, but I, I, I believe wholeheartedly that we'll recover and get back to a, a solid economy. But again, I don't want to be, uh, I don't want to be at the taxpayer's door, um, wh- when, until they have had a chance to recover some.
I think that's the right thing to do too. I think just even if, you know, jobs aren't impacted as, as much as we think they could be. I think it's just kind of like the good faith thing to do for our communities, you know, just to say, hey, th- this can wait. Cause we've said, none of it is a necessity right now, you know? So, so to kind of put it off a couple more months, I think is the, just the good thing to do.
Yeah. I, I, uh, I agree with that too. I think that this is
Yeah, I, I, uh, I agree with that too. I think that this is a, that's really logical to do that at this point, just because of the way that the, the economy is. And, and, and actually, I think that, like you mentioned, uh, to Mr. Evans, is that, you know, people aren't working right now too. And, and that might lead to some other things that we have to do, is some adjustments to some of our estimates too, even, even for the forecast going forward as well.
We should probably do a little research, though, into the success of levies in the spring election and success of levies in November.
I can get that.
Actually, I have, that's in our five-year forecast. Um, when I presented, I'll touch base on that, but historically here for our district, we've had, I think all of our levies, I don't have it in front of me, but going off memory, I think we passed them all, um, in spring, the spring portion of the year, so none in November.
Yeah, I should remember that, but I don't, so thank you for doing the research.
I don't remember it off the top of my head either, but.
And I, and I'll, I'll get some additional statewide information. I know BASSA and OSBA both have that readily accessible.
Right.
I kinda like the idea too. I, I was a little nervous going into the twenty twenty, like the November, just because I think just politics are gonna be a hot mess. And like, it's gonna be a hot mess, let's face it, in this country. So it might be nice to kinda not have all that noise, so we can kind of work with residents about, you know, the school and, and really what's important.
So, so Tom, from an administrative standpoint, uh, and, and I agree with everything that's been said, but from an administrative standpoint, um, what would you recommend we do differently? I mean, do we, do we tell the community, this is the direction we're gonna go, or do we wait a while? And then secondarily, I've, I've gotten a lot of benefit from this timeline that you and Matt have worked really hard on. And I, I, I think it'd be helpful if we do move this back to the springtime to, to have, uh, you know, revised timelines so that we can follow the benchmarks that we achieved.
Well, I think there's no question that we, that we, uh, when the time is right to say to the public, listen, we started this process. We understand with what's happened, that we need to delay that process right now. We have told you in, in two community meetings that the building is structurally sound right now. Um, it, it is. Uh, so, uh, you know, in an effort, and I, I'll just frame it the same way, and I'll work with Aaron on that. We're, we're gonna push this back to allow families to recover from the, the COVID nineteen crisis, quite honestly. And I think they'll, they will appreciate that. I, I think that's something that will work with Aaron and will be prepared to do. I don't, I don't think now is the time to, to mention that. I think as we uh, move a little bit further down the road and also say, you know, we're continuing to plan, we still wanna get the value, we still wanna talk to their village council. There, there's more meetings to be had, and Matt and I can sit and, and work on that.
Okay, well, thank you both for the update.
Thank you.
Mute, anything else?
Uh, no, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we had previously voted on his consent agenda, so, Mr. Evans, your discussion items.
Okay, I, I've just, uh, just several things to discuss. Um, you know, what came up in the first, uh, I'm gonna go right back to the, to the levy, is uh, talking to Brooklyn Heights and Cogah Heights, the, the, the conversation about a field house. And we met, uh, Matt and I met with GPD online yesterday to say, you know, we've got, we need to know what that number, that five point nine, what does that entail? And also, what does that look like? Cuz I, I know that there's some board members that maybe don't feel strongly about a field house being a part of this, but uh, and I don't wanna drag GPD along for two more months and say, hey, we're just, and have them work on costing out a field house and say, you know, it's not gonna be a part of this anyhow. So, um, I, I'm just gonna, and I'll put that in the Friday updates, but I would really like to have a, an open discussion on April twenty-second about, um, about, about the field house per se, because that's a, that's, that's almost six million dollars. Uh, I can give you an idea of what that's gonna look like. Uh, Jason just sent me a, a spreadsheet with, to be able to uh, prioritize some items on it as far as a field house is concerned, and, and Matt and I are gonna work on that. I'll, I'll work with Ryan Kelber too, to, to, to try and narrow some of that stuff down. But then, uh, would really like to talk at April twenty-second about that. The second thing I have is staff contract renewals. Um, uh, if the board's ready, we can, we can bring those forward April twenty-second. We'll talk a little bit in executive session tonight, but I just wanna put that out there. If not, it can wait till the first meeting in May. Um, um, but, but we'll talk in executive section about the renewals. We, we don't have any non-renewals essentially, um, in there. And we don't have, and no retirements have been announced yet. We anticipate a couple, but uh, uh, simply, it's, it's just the reissuing of contracts. But we wanna go through that person by person with the board and executive session, so you, you've got a comfort zone with that. Um, Pat already talked about alternative dates for senior activities. That's, you know, we're committed to try and make this as best possible for the seniors. I stand in front of the seniors every year. I did as a, probably as a superintendent, that my goal is to make this the best year possible for them. Obviously, all these things are beyond their control. We're still gonna try to salvage some of those things, uh, for that class to walk away with.
Hey, Tom, can I just add real quick?
Sure.
Um, there's a lot of districts that are doing some really creative stuff with their seniors. Like, I've seen where they're going from door to door and like decorating the, the seniors' house doors with like a jersey and just like stuff. You know, I, I, I know that there's a cost to that, but, you know, I, I just hope that we're getting, we can get creative to help them feel. Cuz what I'm seeing on social media is it's not so much the kids as it is the parents too. Like, the parents are having a hard time of seniors.
Yeah, and I've seen this, I've seen some of the jersey stuff too. I, I just, you know, I, my, I like that. And one of the things that, that I, one of the reasons I like the senior spotlight so much is that's, that's, that's the whole kid. Um, I, I don't want this to be just strictly athletics, uh, cuz we have some kids that, that, you know, aren't involved in sports and are still great kids for us. But to be, to be, I, I agree though. We, we wanna recognize them. I, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, one of the, I started to do today is I, I pulled a card that I'm gonna send every kid a card home. I'm gonna do a hand, handwriting note to every one of the seniors uh, in the next week and mail them out to the seniors just to say, hey, we love you, we're still thinking about you, we're gonna, we're gonna get through this thing together for you guys, so. Um, but, you know, those, I think those, and those, that means a lot, that the individual context of, but yeah, we are exploring some of those things to answer that question.
Thank you.
Uh, we just got the news, music department, fourteen straight years, uh, one of the best communities for music education. Nobody in the state of Ohio is remotely close to fourteen straight years. Congratulations to Mr. Bertoloni, Mr. Sokel, Mr. Michaels. Uh, we'll certainly get that in Tom Talks. I talked to Aaron today about getting a big blurb out about that. Mrs. Eder had already, uh, sent back, uh, you know, about getting something to TV stations. Um, we'd love to get some of the performance out of it. Unfortunately, we don't have high-quality recording gear. Most of our stuff that's been recorded from concerts has been recorded by parents, uh, and it's not a real high quality. Joe, Joe and I ran into that last year trying to get the, some footage of the, uh, Scarlet Angels down to OSBA to have them here. So, uh, that's something we'll work on, but uh, certainly congratulations to them. That's a, and that's a, that's some great thing that's to kinda pat everybody on the back on right now. Um, I'm gonna emphasize in Tom Talks that, you know, we got a four-day weekend coming. Everybody detached a little bit, students and teachers both. Um, we're off Friday and Monday, uh, and spend some family time. Uh, it doesn't look like the weather's gonna cooperate too much with us, but I'll still be out in the garden. Um, but, you know, just detach a little bit. Uh, uh, take a deep breath. We talked about assessments, I won't go over that. I gotta thank Dave Wallace and Matt Hartman. Um, you know, we, we have two people in our tech department, and most districts have, uh, have ten or fifteen people in their tech departments. Uh, as soon as we went to this initiative, Dave and Matt didn't bat an eyelash. They got Chromebooks available. They started, uh, working with teachers that hadn't had a lot of access to, to the technology. They, they came in on weekends, on Saturdays and Sundays, they stayed late at night to work with teachers, anything and everything. So teachers could deliver the material and be able to communicate with their students the way they needed to. And, and uh, I just think that Dave and Matt, uh, I wanna publicly thank them because this is, they've done a phenomenal job. And, and we're not missing a beat on any of this stuff. We are, we're, we're so far ahead in large part because of their efforts. So, thank you to our tech department. Um, the, the admin team has done a phenomenal job, uh, staying ahead with the meetings and, and really staying in touch with the teachers. Our cafeteria staff and van drivers, they come in every Wednesday. Ted's down there with them. Uh, we're sending two days' worth of lunches out on Wednesdays. That's, that's worked extremely well for us. Pam Mead, uh, has done a great job of coordinating down there. Um, so really want, really thankful for their efforts. Um. Uh, there is, the legislature's been on a little bit of a break. I, I know that there's some more COVID nineteen legislation pending. What that looks like, I'm not certain, but we'll stay tuned for that. Um, and we're working on a close-out plan should students not return, uh, to school. We, we're talking about, uh, you know, if they call school for the year, about maybe bringing, uh, aides and some of the maintenance custodial staff back to clean out lockers and package stuff up so kids can come and pick things up. So we're, we're, we're already working on a plan to get things ready. It, should we, uh, need to go in that direction as well. So, uh, just a few items from me there. Any questions?
When we talk about the field house, I'd really like some idea, a better idea of what it is.
Okay, and, and as Mark Salpek said, he goes, you know, Tom, field houses, uh, they can, they're really, uh, expense-wise, the expenses, whatever kind of floor you put in, if it's basketball courts or whatever, if you put it in or track in it. You know, cuz we've seen field houses with outside frames that are nothing more than like that aluminum shed that we have down there already. So there's a, that, that's one of the things that I'm working through with them right now, what, what we get for that, what kind of bang we get for that buck, what does that look like? Um, because it, quite honestly, a field house is one of those things where, uh, it, it's like an ice cream sundae. You just kinda keep adding stuff to it because it all looks good. Um, you, you know, uh, you know, first we want some basketball courts and, yeah, we need a couple bathrooms. Well, let's put some locker rooms in. Well, why don't we put a track in then too? Well, if we're gonna put a track, we should put the weight room down there. Well, what about coaches' office? So then it, it just, it starts to snowball. At some point in time, you gotta say, stop, this is just gone beyond what we had thought it was gonna be. Uh, because really, um, uh, it, it's one of those things that variable-wise can really kind of explode on you if you let it. So, we're gonna kind of, uh, that's, that's the next project we're working on with GPD, uh, Mr. Souchaki.
Can I, can I, yeah, with that, and this might be better for next week or next meeting, but I almost see that as a possible bond issue that's separate. To see, you know, do, do the residents want to vote on just a field house? To see, you know, you hear interest, you hear buzz here and there, and then you hear, I, I'm just hearing a lot from parents with school-aged kids. And, and it's not like really a, an overall consensus one way or another, so, I don't know. I just, and I know, Mr. Lucio, the bond issue is like the devil, um, as far as like owing money and so forth. But I think it would be really tremendous if, if that was maybe separated out of the other pile of, you know, things that we would like to get done. I kinda see it like as a separate issue or a separate factor.
We'll be able to give you a separate number, uh, once, once, uh, I put together some information for Jason to price out. So at the next meeting, we'll have some numbers and then we can, I, I, that's a, certainly a very viable discussion to have at the time.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Is the field house something that could turn into a revenue-making facility as well?
Well, yeah, yeah. And my conversation with, with Jason and Mark was, I, I would certainly, now, I'm kind of a sports guy, but I, I would, I could certainly see us hosting AAU tournaments, whatever. If we got three additional basketball courts down there, we can have two in the high school gym, one in the middle school. We could, we could, we could host AAU volleyball, AAU, uh, basketball tournaments. Those, those are huge fundraisers. Um, um, you know, but again, that takes people to, to do that. And one of the things that, and Gary knows this as well as anybody, uh, the pool could be a, a revenue source for us too, but it takes the right manager to do that. It takes somebody to be able to organize the programs, to be able to advertise. Um, I, I, I still have the belief that if we had the right manager, our pool could be a revenue source for us. Um, but it, it's about having the right management person in there and, and, and what does that look like? I think with, with the field house, I will tell you, quite honestly, I, I've, I've had discussions with, with, because Brooklyn Heights and Cogah Heights have had so much interest about the possibility of if we build a field house, how about you, hire the people to manage it? Uh, maybe doing something cooperatively with the villages then, um, on that end of it. So, I, I think that, all that would be on the table.
Okay. I just had a curiosity about that because, you know, I, I'd like to see it that way too, to, I mean, it's not gonna pay for itself, but maybe it'd be something that would be behooved to, to see something like that done if it could be in that position.
And if our sports teams run, run tournaments in there, you're a hundred percent correct, Mrs. Eder. So maybe that revenue, but that revenue, that would relieve some revenue from our athletic budget if our, if, if basketball runs two, uh, two tournaments, a boys' and a girls' tournaments, and they raise ten thousand dollars apiece on a tournament, which is not a, a stretch of the imagination whatsoever, that, that, that relieves some, some funds from our athletic budget too.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Moving forward, policies and bylaws. I will tell you that we, the state had, Neola has sent us out some, uh, some sample policies in regard to the current crisis, and quite honestly, the reason that you don't see him before you is because the, the governor's orders kinda supersede any of that anyhow. So right now, he's giving us real clear guidance and direction on what we can and can't do. And I, and I'm not bringing policies before you that, uh, may or may not be effective after December first. So, um, just know that we're, we're, you know, I'm on the phone every day with other superintendents talking about Hospital one ninety-seven, the could, shoulds, and would with that, and, and you in turn are hearing about that as we talk about grading and graduation and how, and, and all those types of things. So, um, just a little update on that. Board discussions.
Um, well, aside from what you're, what we're gonna be talking about next, next meeting, which is pretty significant about the, um, uh, about the field house conversation, the only thing I was gonna add, and it's almost a housekeeping detail, is I, uh, wanted to lay out a timeline for the board to complete its evaluation of you and Mr. Lucio, assuming we get to evaluations next week. Um, the following week is another meeting week, and so I guess what I was gonna put out to the board is the idea that I'd send around a, a a Google doodle last week of April, which I think is like the twenty-seventh to the first of May, um, as a, as a time to try and get together. We would've had a couple of weeks to, to look at your evaluations and to draw up our own comments and could hopefully have a productive conversation. Uh, does that seem workable?
Would it be a special meeting, Mark, you mean?
Well, um, we, oh.
It would have to be.
It could piggyback to twenty-second, which I think could be kind of tight, or we could put it into the May meeting, uh, which would give us more to, more time to, you know, evaluate and come up with our notes. I'm not sure what, what Tom is thinking is gonna be on the agenda for, uh, say, the, the first meeting of May.
I, I think we talked about though, it's, it's kind of, when we've done it in the past, it, it's, it's kinda like a full meeting, like to do it in a charity with both of them. So, I guess I was kind of asking, but really more suggesting that we call a, um, special meeting for it.
Yeah, I, okay, I, I, I agree with that sentiment. I, I thought you were going the other way, that you wanted to piggyback on.
No, 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 no.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'd rather, uh, have time to, to, to reflect on what they offer us, uh, develop my own comments, and then for us to jointly get together and, and come up with a, uh, with the, with the best outcome of reflecting everyone's values. So yeah, that's what I was saying. I wanted to put together a, a doodle for when the other four board members would be available for, for maybe the earliest to be the last week of April, if that's okay. Uh, and then tonight, Lynda, you talked about setting up a Finance Committee meeting, and so I don't wanna over-meeting anybody. Um, so I guess we'll just wait and see, but that's kinda what I was thinking, is send around a doodle for the, uh, last week of, uh, April to see about people's capabilities.
No worries, Mark. It's not gonna conflict with finance, so we'll, we'll get them both done in the same week, you know?
Yeah, well, I was gonna say also, because we're meeting remotely, I, I think that we, um, have more flexibility in our schedules that if we wanted to set up a time on a Saturday morning or Sunday afternoon or something. Okay, that, no, so Monday.
I mean, not Saturday morning, maybe Saturday afternoon. I'm not a.
Whatever, whatever.
Yeah, right, flexibility.
All right, sounds good. I guess I don't hear anybody else saying that that's a bad idea, so we'll go with that. Okay.
I think it's better if we do have a separate meeting. We can be more thorough instead of feeling like we're rushing in, in one of the, our regular scheduled meetings that sometimes can go kinda long.
I, I, I'm with you.
And, and Mark, I'm, I'm in agreement with you too. It's like, I think that we have, um, um, more flexibility now, so we can have a lot more, um, and at least I do, I have a lot more flexibility about the times I can meet as well because I'm basically online, so, um, anytime is good, really.
Okay, all right, well, we'll, we'll just be flexible and we'll, we'll get it done and do the job that we need to do. Um, that, that's all I have. I don't know if anyone else has any other comments.
I'm just happy with everything that the, our school district is doing for our students. I, I know it's challenging and I know, um, I have good faith that our students and our, our staff are doing what they can for our students. And Mr. Coleman said it best, uh, we're lucky to be who we are and have the school community that we have, and I just wanted to reiterate that. We're lucky to be who we are and have the school community that we have. And I just want to reiterate that. And I'm glad about our music award again. That's super.
Very good. Well, then let's move forward then with upcoming regular meetings. I'm going to flip over to the other screen. We have regular meetings scheduled for Wednesdays at 7:00 PM on April 22nd, May 13th, May 27th, June 10th and June 24th. And unless we notify otherwise, we will be doing them by way of teleconference or video conference. I would now make a motion that we adjourn to executive session pursuant to 121.22G1 for the purpose of considering employment or compensation of employees in the school district and/or 121G4. May I have a second? I'm, I'm sorry, who seconded?
I think we all did.
Mr. Mucchio can sort it out. How about that? So let's, we are now going to adjourn to executive session. It is 8:10 and we're not going to take action, correct, Mr. Evans?
Correct. There's no action. So we'll close out of this one and then I'll, I'll open up the other meeting.
Okay, back to the agenda. So, Mr. Mucchio, would you call the roll please?
Mrs. Edder.
She's got her mute on. Hello, here.
Mrs. Schukert.
Here.
Mr. Souchacki.
Here.
Mr. Naaman.
Here.
Mr. Dobbins.
Here. Five present, none absent. We are reconvening from executive session. May I have, unless there's any other business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Subtle.
Okay, Mr. Naaman moves, Mr. Souchacki seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. This meeting's adjourned at 8:37.